I'd like to call this meeting one June, meeting of the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners to order. Good to see you all here. We're trying to, we've got a new setup, but I think we're adhering to the guidance on how to avoid the coronavirus as best we can, using good logic. So Lance, thanks for organizing that. And do you have any instruction for us about process?
No, sir. We have thirty-three chairs in this room, and we have twenty, so we have a total of fifty-three capacity as we stand right now. But as far as process, continue like we have been doing previously.
And everybody's in this room now, so we won't have to do the call. Okay, thank you very much. In a moment, I'm going to ask Lance Metzler to provide the invocation for the evening. And Craig, would you mind doing the pledge of allegiance?
Do it please, Dan. Our Board of Commissioners have gathered here tonight to make decisions for our county. Please provide your blessing on the agenda and the actions that are before Commissioners this evening. Bless each decision with clear insight, their deliberations with wisdom, their works with clarity and accuracy, and their decisions with impartiality. May they use only their best skills and judgment, keeping their decisions impartial and neutral as they consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before them, and always act in accordance with what is in the best interest of Rockingham County and our fellow citizens. In our Father's heavenly name, we pray. Amen.
Face flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll move on to item four, which is approval of our agenda. There are a couple of other things that have come up since that time. Do we have a motion concerning an agenda for this evening?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion. We approve the agenda without feedback by doing so that we remove item number nine and add to it underneath business ten A, resolution authorizing the use of electronic signatures, and item thirteen, closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen one-one A, approval of closed session minutes, and North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen one-one A five, instruct negotiating instrument.
Motion made for approval of the amended agenda. There is, we have a second.
Second.
Second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay. Ayes have it. Gentlemen, you've had the consent agenda. For those of you not familiar with consent agenda, these are non-controversial items or on a scale that generally that we wouldn't talk about in public for lengthy discussion. However, if anybody has a question about it, please contact our county manager, Lance Metzler, and he will be happy to go through the details. So gentlemen, having looked at the consent agenda, do we have a motion to approve or disapprove?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Moved to approve?
Second.
And seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay. Item six is public comment, and tonight we only have one individual who has signed up. Well, actually, we have two, but I'm told that that's strictly to give the High Sheriff of Rockingham County an extra three minutes. Sheriff Page, welcome aboard here. State your name and where you live.
Thank you. I'm Sheriff Sam Page of Rockingham County Sheriff's Office. I reside in Eden, North Carolina, six forty-five South Madison Street. It's an honor to be here today. Thanks for giving me an opportunity to speak. Last week, in lieu of what we saw happening up in Minnesota, I had a lot of thought going on, and Thursday night I put together some thoughts, and I put those out because this is where I want to let the citizens know how I feel about this matter. As a career law enforcement officer with more than thirty-seven years of public service, I viewed a video released Wednesday. I was shocked at the response by these four Minneapolis police officers during arrest of a suspect. I observed a living human being going from talking mode to going unresponsive at the hands of an officer wearing a badge of public trust, a badge that I hold to the highest level of trust and respect. Every day in America, thousands of law enforcement officers at the local, state, and federal level carry out their jobs to the fullest in a proper manner. When inappropriate or unlawful act of a sworn officer occurs with a citizen, law enforcement officers around the U.S. can feel the impact, as we do today. I encourage my deputies to always treat others how you wish to be treated. Respect has to be earned, and trust also, and it has to be maintained. I pray for peace in Minneapolis, and also for all the families affected by this terrible act. I also pray for them and the many fine police officers serving in that city during this time, and also across the United States. When an unlawful action is observed during an arrest, officers or officers standing by assisting on the arrest have a lawful obligation to intervene. Failing to do so is just as bad as doing the act yourself. I will not tolerate abuse and disrespect of anyone that my deputies encounter. We serve all citizens in Rockingham County equally and fairly under law in Rockingham County, and no exceptions. The United States are over seven hundred thousand police officers, over three thousand sheriff's offices, and nearly eighteen thousand local and state police agencies. I spent the past weekend watching different cities around the U.S. and D.C. having peaceful protests regarding the tragic deaths of George Floyd in Minneapolis, Minnesota. I also watched some protesters involved in acts of violence directed toward local law enforcement officers, innocent citizens, and local businesses. This violence will not be tolerated in Rockingham County. I read a prepared statement earlier that I just read to you regarding my official position regarding law enforcement wrongdoing directed toward a member of an African-American population in Minnesota, also about accountability and fair and equal treatment under the law. This weekend, I observed several lawful protests around the Piedmont area in the U.S. that I fully support. I saw officers carrying out their duties in protecting peaceful protesters standing up for what they believe in, standing up for fair and equal treatment, standing up against law enforcement misconduct in our country. My commitment to all the citizens that I serve in Rockingham County is to make sure that all constitutional protections are adhered to by the professional men and women serving the Rockingham County Sheriff's Office. I ask that you stand with me for justice, fairness, and equality, not only in Rockingham County, but across this great nation. May God bless you, and may God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff Page. We have no further public comment signed up for this time, so we're going to move to the public hearing, and I'll ask Mrs. Lee Cockburn to come forward.
Thank you. So tonight, we are here for a public hearing for a CDBG, Community Development Block Grant, which will help us with sewer extension for Project Optic that we announced last week.
Do you have a question?
Right now, we have, your commissioners are familiar with this, but for the public...
Oh, okay. So it would be two point three million dollars to help us run sewer from roughly the Red Birch location down to Friddle Road, and that's where we'll get the money to go to that area, of which then from there, we, the county, will take it over and go under seventy-three and over to Project Optics' site.
Right. Gentlemen, you have questions before we open the public hearing? With that said, I hereby open the public hearing. Nobody signed up to speak. However, if there's somebody that wishes to address this issue, now's the time.
I just got a comment. Lee, thank you and your staff for your hard work on this. I know how important it is for that area to grow, and we're heading in the right direction. I think we've got a lot of great things getting ready to happen out there.
Thank you. I can agree, yes.
All right. Hearing no further comment, I'm closing the public hearing, and we're now at the point where we would seek a motion to approve or disapprove.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chair.
I'll second.
Moved to approve by Commissioner Hurdle. Craig, thank you very much for the second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay. Item eight, Lance Metzler, county manager. The dreaded budget.
Phew. Yes. Okay. Good evening. I wanted to give you all a brief, a very brief recap of the budget, since I presented you all with a detailed presentation on May the eighteenth, and we had a budget work session on May the, May the twenty-second. The first slide is the budget process overview for the benefit of the public. Just to point out, one of the biggest obstacles we had during this time was to manage the budget operations with the pandemic going on. This is the, again, this is the eleventh consecutive year with no county property tax increase. Increases requested by Cassville Fire Tax District, tax rate from seven cents to ten cents per one hundred valuation. The total general fund budget is ninety-two million, eighty-sixty-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars, which represents a one point six percent increase from the current year's adopted budget. All funds totaled, included totaled one hundred and thirty million, eight-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-three dollars. There, again, there were two major impacts from COVID on our budget process. First was the revenue uncertainty. As I mentioned before, I've worked on many budgets throughout my career, and I have to say this is the most difficult that I've had to work with, particularly trying to estimate what the revenues will be. And the uncertainty we had this year was the sales tax, motor vehicle taxes, and other revenue sources. Secondly, we had to reallocate staff during the COVID pandemic, and we still are. Reallocating them from their normal duties as they would, they'd be working on the budget and the budget process. We had to shift from that to take care of the immediate situation with the pandemic. It could not have come at a worse time, obviously. Of course, pandemics don't come at the best times. The recommended budget represents the best information we have at the present time. Current ad valorem is fifty-two point three million, which reflects an increase of one point five percent by actual growth. We are anticipating a decrease in public utilities and motor vehicles due to COVID. We are projecting a decrease of seven percent of one point one million in our sales tax due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, and we are also anticipating to generate one point nine-one million from the core set sales tax to be transferred to community college. Moving on to expenditures, the recommended budget includes three point seven-six-two-five full-time equivalent positions. That's for an animal shelter technician, a peer specialist for integrated health, a part-time dental clinic administrative assistant, and make the EMS convalescent scheduler full-time. Some of the significant capital funds in the expenditures are in the general fund, IT, core infrastructure, the sediment trap backfill at the fire range, and body camera replacements for the sheriff's office. The landfill fund purchased a Mack roll-off truck and automatic tarp machine, and water and sewer funds purchased listation generators for the remaining ones that did not have generators to prevent overflow during power outage. Vehicle expenditures, two EMS ambulances, one EMS Dodge Ram, seven sheriff's office vehicles, one truck for building inspections, a Ford Fusion for environmental health, and four vehicles for social services, and lastly, a vehicle for water. In this slide, you'll see the school system requested a nine point five percent increase in current expense allocations and a nine hundred and six percent increase in capital outlay funding. The budget maintains the current year appropriation for both the current expense and capital outlay. The schools are building a pretty healthy capital fund balance, which can be used for eligible capital projects, so we'll work with them this year and next year if we can somehow figure out how to use some of that capital outlay request they requested this year to receive funds from this. In the community college, they requested a nine percent increase in current expense and a thirty-three percent increase in capital outlay. Our budget, this recommended, maintains the current year appropriation for both the current expense and capital outlay. Again, the core set sales tax is projected to bring in one point nine-one million that will be transferred to the community college. Here are the changes. There were a few changes from the manager's recommended budget to what is in front of you tonight, based on the workshop session. You should have a sheet in front of you that looks like this. In the general fund, we removed funding for the National Association of Counties, NACO. We added the expected incentive for southern finishing. Increased local option sales tax on the revenue side by six thousand two twenty, six thousand twenty-three dollars to offset the increase in the general fund. The water fund increased due to the expected rate increase from municipalities, and Regis went up by five percent, and Madison went up by eight percent, and the increase, the revenue to reflect the increase from municipalities. The next step is to have this public hearing, then adopt the budget ordinance. I'm through, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Go ahead and start questions. Let's go ahead and get the, nobody signed up for the public hearing on that, but I'm going to go through the process, and then we'll have questions for the county manager. Is there anyone here that failed to sign up for discussions on the budget and wishes to speak at this time? Come forward and give us your name. I'm going to do a process here. Just hang with me a second. I declare the public hearing open, and you are from where?
My name is Mitch Foster. I live at eighteen forty-one Bethesda Church Road in Ruffin, North Carolina, actually in Cassville County. I am the treasurer and assistant fire chief for Cassville Volunteer Fire Department, and in your budget package, you know, one of the things that's in there is the request for our fire department to raise our tax rate from point seven to point ten. I appreciate your diligence in looking into this, and I think if you'll ask around in my community, I'm probably one of the tightest people around, and so I appreciate everything that y'all are doing to make sure that the money is being spent wisely, and I promise you that it is. I'm also a person that I believe in treating everyone fairly, and that includes the citizens that we protect. Part of our budget process, you know, and I saw the minutes or the video of the budget session that you had and the questions that you had, and I thought they were really good questions, and I wanted to kind of clear up some of those things. One of the big things is, you know, let's get back to being fair. The number for the last three years, and I had some paperwork, and I'll be honest, I left it in my office and trying to get here in time. For the last three years, we had documented that we ran about twenty-two point eight percent of our calls in Rockingham County. So with that in mind, with our budget, the only fair thing to me is the citizens of Rockingham County paid twenty-two point eight percent of our budget. I don't think it's right for the people of Rockingham to, you know, support the people of Cassville unfairly, and I don't think it's right for the people of Cassville to support the people of Rockingham. You know, that budget should be split fairly. So that's the big thing, and I want you to know, we're treating both sides fairly. I know one of the questions, well, how does it compare property tax-wise, which I ran those figures, left them at my office, and I was going to pass them out. Nineteen percent, I think, of our total taxable income is in Rockingham County. It means eighty-one percent of it is in Cassville County. So, you know, you can see that the property values pretty much mirror the call volume that we have. So again, I say, okay, that should mean that, you know, everybody should be split equally and fairly. Getting back to, you know, there's a concern, well, how come the tax rate in Cassville County is only three point six-nine cents? The biggest difference there is there's other sources of revenue that Cassville County provides. Every vehicle in Cassville County is taxed fifteen dollars, and that money goes to the county, and the county then divides that equally among the ten departments. We get totally, I think it's about thirty-seven thousand dollars in the vehicle tax every year from the county. And again, the county kind of came up with that as a way of trying to be fair, because you've got some people that own property, some people that rent property, the people that are renting property are getting services, but they're not paying anything because they're not paying the property tax. Well, they probably have a vehicle, so that was one of the ways that they came up with. Last year, or this current year, so far, like I said, we have collected from Cassville County a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, from Rockingham County sixteen thousand nine-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars. When you look at, compare those two figures, if you add them together and divide that out, that means Rockingham only provided twelve point six percent of that budget income. And again, that's not fair. So we're trying to be fair. Now, and a good question, well, what do you need the money for? The big thing is our station is, like I said, was built back in nineteen and sixty-one, has served us well, and we're in the process right now of building a new station. We've purchased the land. The land is right beside our old station, and we've actually got a, somebody's supposed to be working on having the land cleared in the next month or two. So we're moving forward with that process. Part of the problem, I mean, when we identified this issue years ago, we had some structural problems with the station, and we said, we got to do something. We got to do something. Well, we can't really step out on that limb until we know that sort of what we can afford to do. So we really need to have that funding in place before we can step out on that limb. We've got a building plan that we've kind of had drawn up, and so, like I said, depending upon the funding, that will kind of determine when we start that next step. So that's where the building will be located, in Cassville County, to, like I said, get rid of the old one that we've got. The other thing I wanted to tell you, you know, when you, one of the big things that I don't think many people realize of the values of the fire department, we all think about the life and the property that we spare and save, which is great. Several years ago, I came to a budget meeting up here in Rockingham County, and one of the things that, you know, the commissioners kept hammering to the fire departments that were submitting for requests was, well, what are you doing for the citizens? How, what do you, what kind of benefit are you providing? Well, obviously, we can all say, hey, I'm saving, you know, your house, or I'm doing your medical responder stuff. But one of the big benefits of a fire department is the financial savings that it saves the homeowners in your district on homeowners' policies. Five years ago, we implemented a plan to lower our rating, which affects everybody's homeowner's policy. And all the stations in Cassville County got together, and we worked really, really hard and very diligently, and we lowered our rating from a nine to a six. And what does that mean? Everybody in Cassville's district, that includes people in Rockingham County and Cassville County, saved about twenty to twenty-five percent on their homeowner's policy. Mine, myself, I think I ended up saving like a hundred and twenty dollars on my homeowner's policy. That's because we dropped from a nine to a six. That wiped out any tax increase. That wiped out then fire tax, if you want to say that. You can look at it and say, I got a hundred and twenty dollars because I live near that fire department. So just the benefit alone of being in Cassville's district wiped out the entire amount I was going to be charged on my fire tax, not mentioning the little, I mean, the increase that we're talking about. So we saved them that much. Without a fire department in your district, you double it because of the rate. So, you know, the fact that you've got Cassville Fire Department, you know, in that district has saved those citizens much more than they will spend on this increase. I have to ask, as far as the rating for the other departments in Rockingham County, and like I said, I know that I think as far as our mutual aid stations, Ruffin right now is a nine. Williamsburg in, outside of the district, city part of Rockingham, the water supply of Williamsburg is a nine. There's seven inside of it. I'm not sure what Gansville Road is. But anyway, we have gone the extra mile to say that. Not only, let me throw up, I got about the fire truck we planned to replace. We've got a nineteen eighty, I think it's five or one, fire truck. To replace that truck nowadays, the estimated cost of that is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I can't believe it, but, my gosh. So anyway, when you throw that three hundred and fifty thousand in, the potential cost of a station that we're looking at eight hundred thousand dollars, that's well over a million dollars, you know, that we're looking to spend in the next several years to up that department's capability. I think that's about all I had. If you've got questions, you know, I'll be glad to answer them.
Gentlemen? Commissioner Travis?
Hey, thank you. Thank you for coming out. I appreciate it. I know I talked to Will earlier today too, so I, he told me he was coming, so I appreciate it. Now, you talked about fairness, okay? I'm just going to throw these numbers out there to you, and you tell me if everything's fair. Rockingham County citizens are paying seven cent tax rate. Cassville, the tax rate is point three, or oh-three-six-nine, okay? The fifteen thousand, fifteen dollars you get per vehicle from all of Cassville County gives you thirty-seven thousand dollars. Let's just round it and say that's roughly three cent tax rate, okay? That's high, but, so that comes up to point zero-six-six-nine. So Rockingham County is still paying seven cent tax rate, so they're higher than Cassville County is. You understand where, you follow me on that?
I see what you're saying.
Ain't that fair?
Well, let me ask you, what would be fair? How much should Rockingham County pay as far as our budget? What percentage?
Twenty-four, well, you're predicting ten cent, twenty-four thousand dollars. So I'm saying, if it's seven cents, you're looking at seventeen thousand.
So you're saying they shouldn't pay, if we're running twenty-three percent of my calls up in Rockingham County, you shouldn't provide twenty-three percent of my budget?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying is, you want to be fair. The only way you can be fair is a tax rate.
Okay.
Okay? You can't use an invariable number like call volume, because it varies from year to year. It's nothing fixed.
Okay. What can I use?
You don't know how many, you don't know how many calls you're going to have next year.
That's right. We've, we average three years, the last three years.
But you see what I'm saying. Tax rate, tax rate. That's about the, about the only steadiest thing you can really look at that's not going to change.
Okay. So what percent of our budget should Rockingham County provide?
That's your call.
Yeah, it is.
Yes, your call.
And I'll tell you this.
But you got to also look at, you're looking at two hundred houses compared to twelve hundred houses.
I think what, Commissioner Travis, if I may, Craig, I think he's suggesting that it should be a rate per person or per household rather than on calls that vary from year to year.
Right.
Your population is stable, more stable, more stable.
Okay, we compared the property value, which, like I said, was eighty-one percent and nineteen percent. So, I mean, that's pretty close to the twenty-three. I mean, we don't count the people in the district. I don't know that you can do that.
It's hard. I understand. Look, the problem is, fire departments are struggling, especially with volunteers. That's why you have a board. That's why you have a public hearing, and I appreciate everything you do. Only thing is, I have to look out for the two hundred and two residents that are on our side.
Right. And let me ask you a question. What's going to happen to those two hundred and two people when Cassville pulls out?
What's going to happen to the twelve hundred if you pull out of Cassville?
I ain't pulling out of Cassville. I'm going to tell you that as far as my board is concerned, because I'm a board member, I want to do things fair, and I'll, you know, I will say that, like I said, you know, if we pull out of Rockingham, the homeowner's insurance will double.
Oh, I agree.
I believe the commissioner of insurance would have some say in that.
Yeah.
Obviously, but like I said, we have to have a contract to provide protection.
Right.
And, I mean, I'm just trying, like I said, I want to do things fair, and I'm trying to save, you know, the citizens of both of these counties and treat all of them fairly. And I don't think that the request is unfair. I'm trying to save, uh, you know, the citizens of, of both of these counties and treat all of them fairly. And I don't think that, that the request is unfair.
No, I don't, I don't think it's unfair, sir. I, I just want to try to get a stable line of fairness, not on call volume, because it varies from year to year. And you can get a rough estimate of call volume, but, you know, that's beside the point. So, let me ask you this, you're the treasurer, how much, how much, how much you have in your savings now?
Right now, we've got about $441,000.
And how long have you been saving this?
[laughing]
Because I know you've been saving for a building.
Yeah, uh, well, I'll be honest, that number has gone up substantially in the last 10 years, um, because we started identifying some of this process, I mean, we started the building conversation 10 years ago. The rate in Castle County went up three years ago. We went from 2. something, 2.35 to 3.69. Now, again, you, you know, when you look at that, that's a substantial increase in that rate. And, and the way we sold that to the commissioners was we told them, said, "Look, we are in the process, and we're going to lower everybody's homeowner's policy. We're hoping to do that." And that's what I'm saying. We saved the people in Castle County and Rockingham that are in our district a whole lot more than they spending on fire insurance.
I completely understand. Uh, reason I'm asking about the budget, just for point of order, you know, so you'll know, we had a previous fire department that asked the same thing, but they had a substantial amount, just like you do, in their savings, and we denied them.
Right.
Because they should have used their savings. But on your point, you're trying to build a new fire department. I want the public to understand, that's why we understand you're trying to build a new fire department. So, that's the only reason I ask that, because citizens ask me.
Sure, I, I appreciate your diligence.
The other question I've had is, how did you notify the citizens of your budget hearing?
I think you were provided with that documentation. Um, you know, we ran a, uh, article in the Reesville paper twice, uh, advertising that we were having a budget meeting to discuss the fire tax. Um, and, you know, it, that was what I was told.
What you require by law to do.
Right. I mean, I, I contacted, I think it was Justin and William, uh, you know, they were the ones that I dealt with and, and, and working on this, and I asked them, I said, "What do I have to do?" And they're the ones that told me, said, "Okay, you got to have a public hearing, it's got to be advertised two weeks prior to your meeting." Uh, so I said, "Okay, and I'll do that."
Right.
And I mean, I, I did the best I could with that.
Right. I know, I know it's hard for fire departments, especially budget-wise, to, to do, to notify your citizens, because a lot of the rural areas, that, some of them don't even get a newspaper.
Sure.
So, I'm just wondering, how did the citizens find out about, did you post it on the fire department billboard out front? Did, uh, you post it at the general store where they go? I mean, other than putting it in the mail, uh, in, in the newspaper, did you do anything else?
No.
Okay, how many citizens from Rockingham County's side showed up at your public hearing?
Again, you've got the list of people, um, and their addresses. Uh, I don't know, I mean, there were quite a few from, uh, I, I know the Reesville, Roughland area that signed up. Uh, I mean, I, I don't have that list in front of me.
Right, I got you. I mean, what I'm trying to get to is, out of the people that showed up, you explained to them what you wanted to do.
Mm-hmm.
They were okay with it?
Yes, sir.
That's what I want to hear. Thank you.
Had nobody, had, you know, we opened it, so like y'all did, anybody got any comments, questions whatsoever? No one had any questions or comments?
Thank you so much, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Got a couple of questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, is, uh, sir, if I look at your numbers, you, you've got a total operating budget somewhere around $134,000 a year. Uh, roughly 17 comes out of Rockingham County from fire tax, of that 7% fire tax that they got, that you currently, uh, roughly, uh, the, the 369 is, generates roughly $80,000 in, in Castle?
No. The 369, we get actually three pockets of money from Castle.
Oh, okay.
Uh, we've got the Cas, the, our, our own Casville Fire District tax that includes part of Rockingham.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and that gives us about, I think, somewhere around $30,000 a year.
And that, but, and, and that Castle Fire District that's out of that pot of money, 7 cents comes out of Rockingham, how much comes out of Castle? Is that the 369?
On the 36, I don't know how to speak.
You say, I'm, I'm trying, I know that, uh, you said you get roughly $37,000 from your vehicle tax.
Right.
And so, that leaves 80. Okay, now, apparently, that comes from two pots of money.
Right.
Right? What are those two pots of money?
Okay. Um, we got the Casville tax, uh, which is, you know, the, the property tax.
Yes, sir.
And then...
Is that real and personal?
Yes.
Cars and houses?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, and, three years ago, we were the, and still are, the, the only district in Castle County that has a fire district tax.
Okay.
Um, everybody else was depending upon fundraisers and, and the $37,000 that they got every year from the vehicle tax. Three years ago, uh, we went to the commissioners and said, "We need a service district tax to cover the entire county." Because the fire departments, we can't go out on this limb, lower this rating with the money that we've got.
Yes, sir.
So, now, there's a fire service district tax in the entire county, and, and that's the, where we kind of got another pool of money, because we've had people that are...
Is that divided equally among the fire districts?
No, it's divided according to the, the property in your district. And of course, um...
What's that rate?
Sir?
What is that rate?
Was that raised?
Yeah, what is that rate when, on, on the fire district tax?
3.69.
That's 3.69, okay. The, that third pot of money, where, where does that come from, and how's that determined? You got vehicle, your fire dis, tax district, and you said there was another pot of money that you get?
We got the vehicle tax, we've got the fire district tax, and then we've got the service district tax.
The $15 per, per vehicle.
That's, that's a vehicle, yeah.
Yeah. So, a- a- and where that comes from is, I'm going to tell you, it's complicated. Uh, it has really been complicated getting this thing figured out in, in our... Because we have our own tax district, we decided not to give up our rights to our tax district. So, we have property outside of our Casville tax district that we cover. So, now, they're in the fire service district tax.
Okay.
So, we get money from those that were outside of the Casville tax district. And I'm going to tell you, it has been a struggle and a half.
It sounds confusing.
Oh, yeah.
Is that with the departments that you have like a mutual aid agreement with that you help service? Never mind. Let me ask you this question.
Sure.
Uh, the $37,000 that you get from the $15, do I understand that that is something that is, uh, levied on every vehicle in the county and then divided equally among the 10 fire, just, fire departments, rural...
That is correct.
So, if you have a relatively rural area where you don't have a lot of houses that have a lot of cars, and there's a more populated area in another side of the county that has more vehicles registered at that, it's still divided equally?
That's correct.
Okay.
Because, again, we're kind of all in that thing together, and, you know, yeah, uh, it was just the simplest way, because, you know, trying to figure out whose vehicles were where, they said, "No, we can't do that."
Hey, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Craig.
Look, I just want to throw this out there, just for a piece of information. If the Rockingham County charged each resident out there with a $15 vehicle tax, it'd only be like $3,000 or $4,000. That's one vehicle per household. Now, if I double it, you're looking at $8,000 per, for, for all of it. $15 times household?
No, we've got $93,000.
No, 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 I'm just talking about for his district. If we make...
Oh, okay. Oh, you're looking at this?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, uh, I'd just like to point out, I think last year, you, you received $18,548 is what we're showing. And with the projections on, uh, on this budget, it's going to be $24,587. That's about a third, about a 30% increase. So, that's, you know, the concern I have, it looks like a pretty steep increase during these tough times.
I agree with you. A- a- and, you know, I, I will say that, like I said, I am a very, very physical conservative person. Um, and I said the same thing to my board, I said, you know, "That's a lot." And, but, you know, the, the flip side of that coin is, again, trying to be fair to both citizens of both counties, and with the projects that we've got, I mean, at some point, you know, what do I do? Do I come and ask for a little bit this year and a little bit next year? But I, I, I think that's going to be challenging for you to pass. I think that, like I said, when the citizens realize that, again, the big savings they've had, because they're in Casville's district, uh, like I said, we wiped out an entire amount of money that they would be paying with, just in that, like I said, by us going from a nine to a six. Like I said, saved me 100, about 120 bucks.
Very good, thank you. I've got one, one more question, uh, for the county manager. Uh, I know we had talked during our meeting about doing a Code Red, was, was that sent out last week?
Yes, sir, it was on, uh, May 27th, 8:15, 8:00 P.M.
So, our county residents, we notified through county, through, uh, Code Red, and they would have an opportunity to be here.
Out of the 202 that were, um, on, out there, 165 phone calls were out, that makes the other ones more on Code Red.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Manager, one follow-up question. Uh, the, uh, the revile that we just went through, is that, is that the, what you project as an increase in their, uh, their tax on what we're going to, what they're going to get from Rockingham County? Is that what us, is that how you come to that number of, uh, what is it, $24,587?
That was just based, yeah, it was based on the value that was out there.
The revile that just went out in that area? So, did y'all calculate that into your, that you were going to realize an increase? Although the tax rate, uh, your tax rate stayed the same out there at 7%, the value of the real property that you're, you're getting the proceeds from may have increased some, uh, across the board. Is that accurate, Mr. Manager?
This includes the revile, I'm not sure if it went up or down, I don't remember last year.
The revile would have been included in the current year's budget, so any growth in property would already happen this, for next year.
We did, we looked at the values that the county submitted us, um, and, like I said, I think it did go up slightly. I don't have the figures before me for, uh, the year before, but I think, like I said, the, this, the year before, our values, I want to say, were like $20,500,000, and this year is $21,750,000. So, it was a slight increase, but yes, we did factor, you know, use that new evaluation into our request.
And you said your fund balance was?
About $440,000. Which, like I said, if my truck dies tomorrow, that wipes it out. That's crazy, I can't believe it.
If you can get one for less than half a million now, you're doing pretty well, you're doing pretty good.
Yep. Blows my mind.
You indicated that your rating now was a six.
Yes.
And, of course, some of those ratings, uh, as you continue to, to lower that number, it gets to a point where rural fire departments just can't get so far.
Right.
Uh, and so, uh, is there a possibility of lowering that any further where you're at?
I think there's a distinct possibility. This is the first time we have gone through a, a rating, and, um, we identified several areas that, you know, we say, "Oh, well, we can do a lot better in that." And I mean, that's a part, again, of our long-range planning. Um, there are several things that, you know, we can do. The only problem with that, uh, and if I, I'm not wrong, uh, again, I think anything below a five provides no change to a homeowner's policy. It helps with commercial business. But if you got a rating of a one, uh, your homeowner's policy is going to be the same if you had a rating of a five.
Okay. Would the new equipment help you perhaps improve some of those deficiencies?
I think that will be definitely a part of it. Um, one of the big things that, um, influences your rating in the rural area is your ability to transport water. And again, one of our big, uh, vehicles that we have to transporting water is that 19, I think it's an 81 truck. Uh, it's got a 5-inch dump on the back, and, uh, you know, most of the big trucks nowadays, they're coming out with 8-inch dumps. That's a huge amount of time saving, you know, when you dumping that water. I'm not going to say it's totally practical in a rural city situation, but that's how the, you know, they do the rating, but yes, uh, you know, having that on a new truck could save substantially. And again, that's one of the things we're looking at having to replace.
All right. I don't have any further questions for this gentleman, have some for Lance on some other things.
Yeah, I got some for Lance, too.
Okay, uh, before we let you go, uh...
And I appreciate your time, and I'm seriously, I appreciate your diligence, uh, because, like I said, I, I'm a taxpayer too, and I want my money used wisely. Uh, a- and, and your questions are very, very valid. Um, I, and I appreciate it, because like I said, and I understand the hard thing that you're with, and, uh, like I said, I know there's tough times, and like I said, we're just trying to be equal and fair.
One question for me, if that's all right.
Go ahead, Mr. Perd.
Before you walk, uh, before you get away, I, I know you said you're in the, uh, you, you, you're planning to build a new facility, and you're getting ready to create land, and, uh, and you're on that timeline. Have you developed a, a, a more comprehensive timeline about the construction of your facility? Because I believe that's one of your biggest concerns about increasing this, uh, your increase. One of the things that you're most concerned about, I take it, is, Craig, building a new fire, fire station. And I know you said the truck.
Right.
Truck's 300, we said 350,000 roughly to replace that 85, uh, model vehicle, but I think, I gather, that your, uh, one of your major concerns is the, the fire station.
Correct. Uh, I'm not sure what exactly your question was. We have developed...
Have you got a timeline for your...
A timeline? I would say, no, we do not have a definite timeline. Uh, we have already met with an architect, um, and got a drawing drawn up, and we're beginning to work on that. Uh, some of the, yeah, I'll be honest, we spent a tremendous amount of time the last several years working on this rating. I mean, that was a huge, huge undertaking. I mean, there's paperwork out, the, wherever. Uh, a- and so, like I said, that really kind of put us behind on working on the building. Uh, but like I said, we have just recently, you know, several months ago, met with the architect and said, "Okay, let's start the drawing process." Let's, because I'll be honest, right now, we're just estimating, you know, well, what will you think a building will cost us? And, you know, we're in the neighborhood of around $800,000, okay?
Is that what they think, their estimate is around $800,000 for the facility?
That's, like I said, sort of the starting point. You know how that goes. You start out with, "Yeah," and then you start going, "Well, we want you, we want this, and we want this." I know Yansville just made an addition, an addition, and they were over, uh, a million dollars. Now, again, I'm just, I'm floored by some of these numbers.
And I believe you said your, your, your station was built in 1961?
1961.
It's probably tied to it.
Well, I, I appreciate, I, I know I have some questions for the manager, but as I shared with the gentleman back in the back, this is, uh, some uncertain times, especially from a revenue standpoint.
Sure.
And, uh, and I didn't know if, uh, if there would be any, if your request could also be, would be considered, if we, this board would consider staggering it, you know, over a, 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 a two-year period versus a one-year period, even if that's a feasible option. I, it's, it's for, I just want you to know that, uh, that's some of the thoughts that, that I had when I was looking at your, 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 your request. It's, uh, right now, we in a, an unknown, we've got an unknown of what we got going on in the county.
I reckon my, my concern with that, and, and I appreciate that as well, uh, is, you know, if you do stagger something, if I come back next year and ask for the other part of it, you know, don't chastise me because you just gave me something last year.
Well put.
We, we see it every day.
Yeah, oh, I know, I, I...
Or at least twice a month.
Yeah, well, we appreciate it. Yeah, well, we appreciate it. I just want you to know from my, from the optics, I'm sitting right up here.
Sure.
There's a, revenue is, is, is unknown and we've got taxpayers out there, citizens that are, have been hit hard during this pandemic.
I agree. And, and like I said, it's definitely troubling times.
But I'd have nothing else to say.
Thank you for your time.
No, stay there a second if you would. I didn't get to ask questions. Sometimes fair does not equal equal. And I understand the difficulty. It would be nice if you could do it per person, but I think that's where some of the questions came up from. And I appreciate that you, you're looking at five pretty tight folks here. And I know all of us consider it our job to protect the, the tax dollar as best we can, but we're also interested in service to the resident. And I just want to mention that a six rating for a dime a hundred matches up pretty well with your colleagues. And while you're up here, I want to recognize how valuable all of us think volunteer fire departments are to the safety of this county. So don't feel put upon, we want to do the right thing by you guys.
I know.
So, thank you very, oh, by the way, what are you going to do with the old fire station?
Good question.
We'll practice.
You know, it will probably end up being some type of a training facility.
So you're not going to sell it?
We can't.
You can't?
No, we don't actually, if it quits being a fire department, it goes back to the original landowner.
Okay.
So, yeah, I, I can't sell it. If it, we don't use it, we lose it.
I was just curious. Other questions, though? All right. Are you part of the public hearing? Are we ready to?
Sure, I mean, if you, if you're-
Yeah, why don't you come on?
Stand up, I'm sitting, sure.
Well, why don't you come on, because we might-
And I'm scared now.
Have a question for you after we listen to him.
We got some good doozies for you.
We really appreciate you and your guys.
Next, too.
All right, Lance, what have you got to say? Well, questions for the county manager?
You want to go first, Kevin?
You'll close the public hearing because you had-
Procedurally?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We still may call you back. Anybody else wish to speak from the public in general regarding this? I know there's at least one other member from that fire department. Hearing none, I declare the public hearing closed. I recognize our county manager. I know there's some questions for you. I'm going to start with Mr. Pirtle.
Start with Kevin. Kevin ain't gone first in a long time.
Well, Lance, I believe the vast majority, if not all of this budget, was adopted, not adopted, but prepared prior to mid-March.
That's correct.
And so there really has been an inability, not for lack of effort, but an inability of staff to take into account any recessionary numbers from sales tax and potential collections, that sort of thing. Is that right?
That's correct.
And although we've received some monies through, through the state from the federal government, that is not part of this budget, but is designated for the COVID-19 expenditures.
Yes.
And, and at this point, I think it's fair to say that as far as projections that you're making in this budget for sales tax collections are purely speculative as we stand here today.
That's accurate.
Okay, and, and again, that's not for lack of effort on staff's part. It's just based on sales tax collections with the state, it's just not really available, especially down to the county levels, per county and what you may perhaps receive for the next couple of months. So with all of that groundwork set out there, we've got in this budget some capital expenditures. What would the manager's thought process be? Perhaps delaying any capital expenditures that are in this budget for maybe three months, maybe six, I'm thinking maybe a quarter, maybe two quarters, some period of time until we can get some numbers from the state as far as what's coming in, what's, what kind of, some real data that we can rely upon.
I think that's a, a valid and good recommendation. We can hold off on that unless there's an emergency capital that comes up. I think that the capital expenditures we have in the budget right now, we can hold on to for at least a quarter or two. Just depends on how the, the funding flows. If it doesn't come in like we expect, then we may have to until next year. But I think we can hold off to at least a quarter or two.
Okay.
If we move to do a moratorium, would there be any negative impact?
You wouldn't need to do, I'll bring back recommendations. So what I'll do is hold off on any capital expenditures for the first quarter and then bring back a recommendation after that quarter to find out how the revenue streams are flowing.
And I'm not crazy about instituting any sort of moratorium. I mean, I, I think if we've got an understanding, if the board as a whole is comfortable, I just wanted to get the information from Lance and-
That's right.
I understand with vehicle purchases, those state contracts will usually fall anyway, so it's not really an impact on, on a lot of our capital purchases. But it is some guidance from the board to the manager that, let's make sure we get some hard data. Because, look, it's, it's possible that he comes back in and we've got a, a huge decrease in what their projections are. And if that happens, we may be telling him to cut things. We hope that he comes back and they've hit it, maybe they've underestimated. And we've got money left over, but unfortunately for Paul and Lance and, and all the department heads, there's nothing to go off of.
I've seen a lot of head nods to what Commissioner Berger's saying, so I, I agree with you that guidance. Yes, sir.
Only thing I ask, Kevin, is we give the county manager latitude, let him determine what's present to go ahead and get if he needs to, without coming back before.
I'll ask you all about that if I need to.
I mean, I think, my thought would be, emergency matters, I mean, certainly, I mean, we do have a savings, but we don't want to pull from the savings to pay things unless we have to. My personal thought is just to let the department heads know that, yeah, these things are in there. We plan on doing it as long as the money's there, as long as the money flow is good. That's, you know, my own thought on it and I'm seeing some head nods, so.
I think you got, you know, if you're like America's two-talent again, you got five head nods.
You won't need a motion for that, being put as department minutes.
I agree. I don't, I prefer not to use the term moratorium for the simple fact is that there is that, that emergency may arise where you need to move on something in an email or just a, just a letting us know would be suffice. So I don't, I don't have any problem whatsoever. We won't know the forecasted revenues until, what, September maybe?
We just found out March's sales, Powell's told us this morning, they're down about 3%.
But I'm saying through the end, end of this month, it will probably be guessing August, September.
Yeah, it's going to be another three months at least.
It's October, September. First October.
So, yeah, I think that's a very rational move, is to, as my colleague has said.
Are you ready for your question now?
I don't think Kevin's done.
I'm comfortable at this point. I mean, I may have something else that-
Certainly.
But at this point, those are the things that I just wanted to, to kind of bring out and bring up.
Okay, Commissioner Travis.
Lance, in the budget, you talked about the fire range sediment traps. Is, is possibility for that fund to come out of landfill?
No, that, that property was converted to the sheriff's office.
It was converted. Is that something that we can put on hold too until we see the numbers come in?
Well, that's part of the capital project, so that would be on hold until further notice. Unless DQ says something, that would be an emergency thing we should have to come and address with the guys.
Right. And in your budget, your estimate for RCC is 1.9, and I, I guess that's a rough estimate too, because that's probably going to be a lot lower than 1.9.
Yeah, that was based, if you remember before the recession, we had 1.91 in there and that's just-
I just wanted to put it out there because when people hear numbers or C-numbers, they expect that number. And I wanted to make sure RCC knew it might be lower.
It's just an estimate only.
Just an estimate on that. That's all I got right now.
Well, we've made rounds. Commissioner Hall?
I've got no questions.
Commissioner Pirtle. We've done some research here. A little explanation, we've got, if we're getting close to a motion, we have two. And in the process of approving the budget, if we vote yes, that will include Caswell's increase to 10 cents per hundred.
That's correct.
So what I'm doing is, there's a potential that I might have to break this out. You know what I'm saying? So.
Mr. Chairman, I may make one comment. As I spoke to the chief and the assistant chiefs back there prior to the meeting, with my concerns about just the timing of this request, I also recognize that they did their due diligence with the advertising. I recognize that they provided a, a, the information, the minutes of their meeting and who attended it. And I also recognize that this board directed our manager to make a, a, an attempt to contact everyone in that fire district to come speak tonight and be heard about their concerns with that fire district, increase to that tax rate. And yet, we have no one in the audience. So I have, have mixed feelings about it. I understand their, their, what their, their dilemma as far as trying to make sure that they have a, a revenue stream that matches their, their expenses across the board. But I also have a concern just about the timing right now. But with that being said, I, I do want to make sure that, that at least I say thank you for one, what you, what you do every day as far as in public safety. And two, you certainly have a justification for your, your needs. I appreciate all the legwork Mitch and, and the chief and Will have done. It's just a matter of, this board, I think, needs to consider if the timing is right, right now. And so, that being said, Mr. Chair.
You just, you just stop talking.
I'm just going to stop talking.
All right. I guess I could, I'm not going to twist any of ours, but I'll try. Is there a motion to adopt the budget including the 3 cents increase for Caswell Fire District?
Well, and just-
With, with the cautions that you brought up, Commissioner Berger?
Well, but just to clarify for all the commissioners, I believe what Paul and Lance have provided are different motions in front of you. One was a yes on Caswell, one was a no on Caswell, and I've heard from Commissioner Pirtle maybe a halfway on Caswell as another possibility. I mean, that, just putting that out there so everyone's aware of what you got.
I, I repeat, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the budget including the Caswell increase. And if I don't get one, we'll go from there.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the budget with the stipulations that Senator Berger said about capital and with the Caswell tax increase.
Appreciate the promotion.
All right, we have a motion on the floor.
Put your name.
I'll second that. To, point of clarification, does that include the count, no change in the county property tax rate? We'll maintain it 0.695 per 100 valuation?
Yes, I'm in my motion to respect reflect that.
Yes, it does. A, as presented is the way I took everything. And of course, we've got this voluminous home with further details, should you have trouble sleeping tonight. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Seek further discussion or comment. Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed by nay. And I want to publicly say to, to you and your erstwhile young colleague there, you did a great job. We know that there are a large number of insecurities, both on the revenue and the, and the need to spend side. And I'm like Commissioner Pearl, I, I really appreciate the fire departments in general and what, what they have to go through to do what they do. Your toys and your tools are just very expensive. I, I don't know who gets a better deal than you, but they're very expensive. So I'm thanking the other commissioners as well because this takes a while to get through. And I, I know all the commissioners spent a good deal of time. So thanks, Mr. Manager. Take your approved budget and let us hope for the best. Item nine is being deferred. New business, Mr. Manager?
We have, I'm going to turn that over to legal counsel.
Yes. Mr. Chair, this is a resolution, resolution authorizing the use of electronic signatures in Rockingham County business transactions. As some of you may, may know, we are transferring, converting paper processes, mainly our contract review and approval process, going from the traditional paper route, which I'm, I know my department is very, very thankful for, but converting this into a new electronic workflow system. We have rolled out this contract review program, which is, in my opinion, is outstanding. But this is required by statute to allow those officials who would sign and approve this contract, including those in procurement and, and in finance to approve these contracts.
Questions, gentlemen? Seek a motion, hear your name.
I make a motion to approve electronic signatures.
Have a motion on the floor.
Second.
And second. Further comment, question? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay. The ayes have it unanimously. Mr. Manager? No more new business. Commissioner comments, and we're going to start with Commissioner Travis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank everybody for being here. Sheriff, I, I just want to say thank you for your remarks. It's good to have leadership in the county that stands for law and order and protection of the citizens, and I appreciate what you do. Also, I'd like to thank this board. I know how painstaking it is to go through this budget. I don't know how Paul and Lance do it because it's very tedious, but I appreciate this board for what they do and I appreciate what Lance and his staff does. I mean, while we're at it, let's just put a big thank you out to all the county employees out there during this pandemic, everything they've done. Just know that the commissioners know a lot of people stepped up and are really on board helping the citizens of Rockingham County, and we, we see it and I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Berger?
Thank you, everyone, for, those that were able to attend, for coming tonight. Echo that, appreciate the sheriff showing up and providing us with those comments and putting at that, putting that information out there to hopefully ease the minds of our citizens and the leadership that he, he exhibits and our police officers here in our county exhibit. Appreciate Lance and Paul and their work on the budget. So, thank you.
Commissioner Pirtle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too would just echo what my colleagues have, have already stated. Thanks to Lance and Paul. Thanks to Lance and Paul and all the staff and finance and everybody that worked on the budget. I know that there was a lot going on and it was a, your attention was, was divided, to say the least, and you did a magnificent job handling the pandemic and in, during your, your, your time that you could work on this budget and craft a document that, that the, that the board would, would pass. So congratulations and I appreciate all the effort that was put in it and all the effort that the, that your department heads did and submitted it. And y'all taking the, the, the effort to, to go through it so that, and I know that's tough sometimes, too, making those cuts when you get those requests, because there's always more, more need than it is resources, it seems like. So thank you for that. Thanks to the sheriff and his leadership and to the law enforcement in this county. I think you're, I'm a little bit biased, but I think it's a great group of folks. The Caswell Fire Department, thank you for showing up tonight and, and, and coming forward and answering those tough questions that the commissioners had. They be commended. At the end of the day, a, a decision was made, but I think they did their due diligence and I think this board did their due diligence and, and made a, a decision that, that it was for the best of everyone. And with that being said, Mr. Chairman, that's all.
All right. Commissioner Hall.
Thank you. I, I don't think there's much left except to repeat what some of the other commissioners have said. And I do appreciate the sheriff and his staff, appreciate them being here tonight as well, appreciate the first responders in our community for everything that they've been doing. Again, Lance and staff, we appreciate your work on the budget. For those folks in the fire district, I hope you appreciate the, the concerns your commissioners had tonight with raising that rate, but also that I think everyone has gone above board to try to be sure you were aware of it and understand it. And the board seemed to have well-thought-out reasons and well-defended those reasons for those increases. So, you know, we just hope they'll continue to be diligent with your tax money and we appreciate everything those fire departments do do. It's a tough rope that they have to walk. And anyway, we appreciate that. And with that, I'm done. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. While we're complimenting the county manager, I appreciate you handling all the orchestration between you and Jennifer, getting the chairs and the right numbers and accommodating the threat and still getting as much exposure as we can for the citizens, so that's good. I was very pleased that the sheriff talked about professionalism in law enforcement. I think that goes without saying, plus the fact that something like that could occur in 2020 doesn't speak well of our character as a nation. We, we, we're bigger than, better than that. And I'm glad our professional law enforcement troops are there. And I'd like just to remind everybody, COVID-19 is still here. And we're still tracking it and our health department's very busy and I appreciate all the efforts they make to help us run down what's going on. But ultimately, and I think you'll find our health department will agree with this in a hurry, your safety from the threat of COVID-19 is primarily a personal responsibility. And learn to speak to your, certainly your immediate family, your friends, about cautions that are, will help us minimize the impact of the coronavirus. So, with that said, gentlemen, it's time for us to move to the closed session. Roy, I don't anticipate anything of significance following the closed session, and I would entertain a motion to go into said session.
I make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-31811A, approval of closed session minutes, and North Carolina General Statute 143-31811A5, instruct negotiating.
Second. Moved in second. Discussion, hearing none, all in favors, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay. We are now moving out of public session into closed session.